Welcome everyone to our council meeting. Today is Tuesday, it is 4:32 June 15, 2021. I will call our meeting to order. And at this time, if we could welcome Mr. Matt Moreno with BT Church. He will be conducting our invocation.
God, we just thank you. First and foremost, Lord, just for you and who you are, God, and you sending your son Jesus to die for each and every one of us. Lord, I pray this evening that you would continue to be the head of this city, God, as we drive this city forward. God, may the people of Alice know that they are loved, that they are not forgotten, God, and that the council and the mayor, Lord, that they are pushing this city forward to the best it can be, Lord. And so I pray just for the decisions that are made here tonight, God, that you would guide them. God, for every staff member here, Lord, we're thankful for the hard work they put in and the reports they're going to present. And so, God, we ask that you would continue to be with them, continue to lead and guide the leadership of Alice. So we thank you, and in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. And Mr. Councilmember Brumberg.
Please face the flag with your hand. On heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this time, you will open it up for public announcements. Council, we'll start with Mr. Chris.
Just wanted to, you know, remind the citizens that they obviously know it's very, very hot outside, just to stay hydrated, watch out for heat stroke. It'll come on pretty fast, pretty quick, especially in these super high heat indexes. We're only hitting the nineties and maybe the low hundreds, but it's registering in, you know, almost 120 some of these days. So just be careful out there. And for the employers, you know, keep an eye on your citizens, I mean, your employees as well. You're putting them in situations where they have to work in these heats in a lot of cases. Make sure that you take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
No comments.
Mr. Burke?
No, thank you.
The only thing I'd really like to say is that lately, our community is coming together. We're having a lot more community events out there in the heat, like Mr. Burke, Mr. Chris said. So be careful when you're outside and doing those community events, but also continue to stay active with our community. It's such a blessing to watch our community come together with different events out in our city and be supportive out there and be Alice proud, always be Alice proud. And so, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce our royal court, our Alice Royal Court. We have the current and past royal court. I'm gonna name them. We have our current. Hi. How are y'all? In our royal court, we have Miss, Little Miss Alice. And let me, I'm sorry. Get there. And then, let me name it though. Is it three? I'm sorry, y'all. That was Miss Little Alice. That was Camila Ver- Renee, Renee, and daughter of Samantha and Justin Garcia and Christopher Renee and Jennifer Chapa. Then we have Ms. Junior, Ms. Alice, 2021, Juliana Farias. She's the daughter of Monica and Roy Farias. And then, we have Ms. Alice Texas, 2021, Ms. Bria Escobar. And Bria is the daughter of Melissa and Ismael Escobar. We wanted to thank y'all, now council can join me, and we have a little, just a little gesture of thank you for everything y'all do out in the community and for all the joy and you representing Alice. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Maybe get a little bit more like perfect.
Yes.
Okay. Ready? One, two, three. Okay.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
There's always more.
You got one coming up.
Harry, straighten up.
Sorry, go ahead.
Two, three.
And another.
Thank you.
Next, we have our agenda, item number four, is to, to give a proclamation to our United Veterans Burial Association. We thank you for everything you do, and it's what an honor to have you before us, and thank you for your service, and thank you for what you do out in our community. So, at this time, council again. Sorry.
This is my proclamation, and Mr. Sandra Bowen also brought this forward, presented on behalf of the City of Alice and our council. And what we would like to say is we, armed forces, for their service and sacrifice, we pay tribute to the legacy of freedom and peace that they have given for our great nation. I use my resume. In times, times of war and peace, our men and women in uniform step forward to defend their fellow citizens and the country they name. Our veterans have held fast against determined and ruthless enemies and helped save the world from tyranny and terror. And today, we give tribute to the United Veterans Burial Association, originally formed in Alice in 1995, for their continued dedication to our community, but most importantly, for providing over 1,500 military honors to date of ex-service members from all branches of the armed forces. For their determination, courage, and sacrifice, they laid the foundation for a more secure and peaceful world. The honors include a 21 guns salute, the playing of taps, and the presentation of an American flag to the family members of the deceased. And we list here current active United Veterans Burial Association members to date, in remembrance of their continued support to their deceased fellow veterans. The organization and their love and dedication to our community, and I, Cynthia E. Carrasco, Mayor of the City of Alice, do hereby urge all Americans to observe June 15, 2021, a United Veterans Burial Association Day. And I encourage all citizens to recognize the valor and sacrifice of these veterans who continue to be honorable, respectful, and sacrifice to their fallen veterans and this community through ceremonies and prayer. Thank you all so much.
Commander.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for everything.
It's an honor to receive this proclamation from the United Veterans Burial Association. We thank you. I know all our members, someone didn't make it because they're sick, but I'm talking for them.
Well, I appreciate that.
Yes, we do. We're going to want to, yes. We have a pen for everyone.
Thank you.
Put it right next to the sheriff's.
Thank you, guys.
The only concern that I had was that we didn't get any support from Alice. Support, like-
Like from the citizens of Alice?
From the citizens, because they really don't know about us. They think we're part of another organization.
Yeah, we want to bring some more awareness.
And that's really what I wanted, to be recognized for that.
No, we don't belong to the vehicle. Our organization-
They're veteranos, but-
We're going to keep saying that. We don't belong to-
And we're all volunteers.
We have paper.
And we'd love to hear from you guys too, maybe Yoko comes and speaks to us as well at the Road Reassociation. So we do a lot of stuff in the community.
He's the commander, so he's the one that we have to, I usually like to have him say something, but it's kind of bashful.
Yeah, his name is Pete also. Pete Gonzalez.
Oh, sorry. This is my official phone. I'm the guy with the Facebook.
I'm the public relations.
You can-
So we're going to need y'all to be like, like, yeah.
You want some of that meal, though?
No, no, that's-
Bring the chair, grab it, just let me grab the chair.
I can get up.
Here, you just one more.
Swap this one from the desk.
Let me get me a little desk.
Now we're talking.
It gets skinny.
I'm going to need another person to sit down. Actually, can you get right in this window right here?
Sure. I'm a little bit taller.
Oh, now you're bragging.
Slide back one more.
That's a good pic. Perfect.
I didn't mean fat.
Yeah, like, so I can see Pete in the window. Perfect. Are you sure? I'm perfect, I mean, I'm perfect. One, two, three. Let me do one like this. One, two, three. Can we have the girls from the back? With the, oh, let me cut.
Might as well, they're still here.
Can you all make a picture with her?
Never pass up on a picture.
I don't want to knock myself out.
It'd be tragic.
I'd rather save myself from embarrassment.
Let's see here. Okay, look. Let's get you right here. Right there, and you're perfect, and then you're right there, I can see you.
Perfect.
If she stands closer to you, Pete, it'll look like you.
Let me step in front real quick.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Very good. Let me do one for the Alice one. Oh.
One more until the next one.
One, two, three. Okay. Turn your faces there. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate y'all. Thank you, sir.
Very good of you. What do you think? Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. It's good to see you. Take care, sir. Thank you.
Happy birthday, though. Happy birthday. I think so, that is.
I don't know if they want the box. Here's the box for the-
The box, the box for the-
You want it in there?
You want to put it in there?
Here, let me put it in there, please.
I think so, too, if it's important with the commander.
Thank you so much.
He's got a calling card. Or Louis, Louis, do you have a calling card for the mayor? A calling card?
I left the wallet.
Oh, I don't have any on me either, man.
I'm sorry, but I'll get with it. Yes.
I think you have my number.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll bring it.
Okay, thank you.
Just to provide information, whatever.
Thank you, thank you all so very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, it was awesome.
We'll move on to agenda item number five. I can't hear Mr., is it on?
It's an update from Mr. Esparsa. Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to agenda item number five. This is being presented to us by our city manager, Mr. Michael Esparsa.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, but I have on the information side, this meeting is, one, five, five items, actually, a new one. I'll start with the new one. The YMCA did let us know that they actually finally hired an aquatics director.
Oh, all right.
And so, we're going to meet with them, Odie, this week? Odie? We're meeting with the aquatics director-
Monday, she starts Monday.
Monday, starts Monday. So they want us to visit with her, and Yolanda, our Parks and Recreation Director, will be meeting with her and also kind of showing her the ropes out there from what we know. And it's been a long time coming, they've been trying to fill that position for a while, so they finally did it, so I wanted to show them that.
Great, wonderful.
For Lake Finley, on June 3, grass carp were released. They're triploids, so they're sterile fish. That's a natural way to take care of the star grass issue that we've been having out there. So it's through Texas Parks and Wildlife, we got approval and permitted 2,114 fish. The first batch was released on June 3, where it was 1,057. And so, we're going to be monitoring that. That's going to be probably a year-long process of monitoring to see how well they're doing. And if they need to release another thousand or so, they're going to do it after that. And if not, then we won't need to do another release. Also, there was a, through a grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife, we did, it was a grant where we got, the City of Alice, Lake Finley, got 33% of the grant for the whole state. And that was to put some catfish out there, large catfish. So 100 catfish were released out there also for recreational and fishing. And so, there's been some activity out at Lake Finley here lately. Also, want to let you guys know that we did get the, a check from local, for the local border security program, an amount of $43,916. That's overtime for our police department, and so that came in already. Another big thing is the Wyatt Ranches Foundation did give us a grant of $137,250 for the purchase of three vehicles. So on June 3, June 10, I'm sorry, Lieutenant Science and Chief Garcia and myself went to their, the Wyatt Ranches, one of their headquarters out in Awalosa, north of Awalosa, and made a presentation. Really, Chief Garcia made almost an entire presentation and did really well. They had a lot of questions for us, and, you know, we stepped out and they visited for a while longer. They asked us to come back in, and they awarded us a grant for $137,250. That was really, really nice of them. We're, you know, we're pretty much a neighbor for them, you know, they don't have anything inside the city limits of Alice, but they have a big presence in Awalosa, they have a great presence in Duval County and surrounding areas. Their, one of their ranches does extend into Jimoles County, but for us, it's just a nice gesture because we're not really anything for them. But they, they, you know, we, Chief Garcia reached out, they wanted to hear what we had to say, and they did something really nice for us. So we're supposed to get that check, actually, we may have already gotten it, I think.
It was supposed to be within 48 hours.
Yeah.
And so, and I'm hoping to pick it up by tomorrow.
You got it.
Yes.
And, yeah, that's all I have for agenda item five.
That's amazing. So thank you to everyone, and thank you to Wyatt Ranches Foundation, and also to our Texas Wildlife. Thank you for the update. Okay, agenda item number six, just best consider and act upon approval of city council minutes for May 18, 2021, city council meeting. Now, council, they did place before us corrections on item number 11 of the minutes, and item number 12, I believe Mr. Chris noticed, there was, on the voting record, there were some changes, so you'll have that in front of you. If there are no other changes, may I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented with the corrections?
May I like to make a motion for the approval of the city council minutes for the May 18 to 2021 city council meeting.
With the corrections.
With corrections noted.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same thing. The motion carries. We'll move on to agenda item number seven, presentation and discussion from Mr. Bill Norris with Norris Leeout regarding Brown Water Project, Texas Water Development Board Phase II and P3 updates. Welcome.
Good evening, mayors and council. Bill Norris, welcome, Norris Leeout.
Thank you.
I'm giving you a handout tonight. It's got a bunch of numbers on it. So mainly just an update of where we are. As you recall, we have some moving parts with the Water Development Board, which is giving grant and low interest loan, and then the P3 with seven Cs, of which we are in the middle of working through the water supply agreement. And so, I've been working on the water supply agreement and making sure that the scope of work is, is in accordance with where you need to be with it, because if you get this project turned over to you in 15 years, you want it to be still in good working order. So there's something about materials of construction and that we want to make sure that they adhere to. And so, there's a lot of moving parts in that contract as well. What I've handed out to you is, I wanted to put together a little historical background of where we were when we first started this project almost a decade ago. And so, I've handed out kind of the first box, set of boxes, is your current water supply. And it's not all-inclusive yet, because, and if you look at the bottom line in a drought year in 2012, you were losing a lot of water, you were paying less for the water back then in 2012. I think it was in the neighborhood of 96 cents per 1,000 gallons, and what is it now? Dollar 20?
Dollar 11.
Dollar 11, so it's increasing. And so, in a drought year, you pay a lot more money for your treatment of water, one, because you lose water and the evaporation. And, and so, as you, as a more of a wet year, so if you look at probably, 2019 is probably not a representative year, but it was probably a wet year. And what happens is you get inflow into Lake Finley that you don't pay for. And so, you're purchasing less water and people are using less water, so you have lower costs. But that's not something you can bank on. And the reason for starting this project in the first place is you were, it was a critical situation where you may not even be able to pick the water up from Lake Finley. And so, that was what started this project, is during the drought of 2011, 2012, it was a pretty scary situation. So that's what started this ball rolling. And so, so you're looking at, you know, probably more like closer to $4 per 1,000 gallons going forward, the price of water from Corpus Christi, you have, in their contract, as they develop new water supplies, it affects everybody. Just because it's not your pipeline or your supply, they spread it across the board, so you can expect it to go up as they can continue to grow. So as we move forward down on the new water supply, which is the P3, seven Cs, so I put all the costs associated with the city's representative cost, where they're, you're putting in the wells and the supply to the RO system. All-in cost without the boron that we talked about at the last, at the last meeting, is about 326, so it's a little bit less at that point. But increase due to the boron brings it up to 365. Now, that's the high-end price right now, because as we get through the second well and the boron, if it depletes out of the well system, then you'll decrease your power cost and your operational cost. And so, that will be a pass-through that will, that they will deduct that price. But they had to price this as we're going to get the same quality of water in the second well. But, so you know exactly where you're going to stand, it's going to be this, this much or less. And so, that's, that's where we stand today. From a scheduling standpoint, it looks, the schedule they submitted to me to finish the project fits right in line with the schedule for us to finish the wells. And there's two long lead time items that each of us have to do. They're doing the discharge permit for the concentrate disposal, which probably will take about nine months. Our environmental information document is probably going to take about eight months, and then we hit the ground running. These projects take a little bit of time, just because you've got environmental things that there's nothing you can do about it, other than go through the system and get that done. So, anyway, we'll be working pretty much, hopefully, maybe the next meeting or two we'll have a water, water service agreement for your consideration, and that would be our goal, and also the Water Development Board's seal of approval as well. And that's, once we get that, then we're off and running.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We'll move on to agenda item number seven, presentation and discussion from Mr. Bill Norris with Norris Lee out regarding Brown Water Project, Texas Water Development Board Phase Two and P Three updates. Welcome.
Good evening, mayors and council. Bill Norris, welcome. Norris Lee out.
Thank you.
Here, I'm giving you a handout tonight. It's got a bunch of numbers on it. So mainly just an update of where we are. As you recall, we have some moving parts with the Water Development Board, which is giving grant and low interest loan. And then the P three with seven Cs, of which we are in the middle of working through the water supply agreement. And so I've been working on the water supply agreement and making sure that the scope of work is, is in accordance with where you need to be with it. Because if you get this project turned over to you in fifteen years, you want it to be still in good working order. So there's something about materials of construction and, and that we want to make sure that they adhere to. And so there's a lot of moving parts in that contract as well. What I've handed out to you is I wanted to put together a little historical background of where we were when we first started this project almost a decade ago. And so I've handed out kind of the first box, set of boxes is your current water supply. And it's not all-inclusive yet because, and if you look at the, the bottom line in a drought year in twenty twelve, you were losing a lot of water. You were paying less for the water back then in twenty twelve. I think it was in the neighborhood of ninety-six cents per thousand gallons. And what is it now? Dollar twenty?
Dollar eleven.
Dollar eleven. So it's, it's increasing. And so in a drought year, you pay a lot more money for your, your treatment of water. One, because you lose water and the evaporation. And, and so as you, as a more of a wet year, so if you look at probably, twenty nineteen is probably not a representative year, but it was probably a wet year. And what happens is you get inflow into Lake Finley that you don't pay for. And so you're purchasing less water and people are using less water. So you have lower costs. But that's not something you can bank on. And the reason for starting this project in the first place is you were, it was a critical situation where you may not even be able to pick the water up from Lake Finley. And so that was what started this project is during the drought of twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, it was a pretty scary situation. So that's what started this ball rolling. And so, so you're looking at, you know, probably more like a closer, closer to four dollars per thousand gallons going forward. The price of water from Corpus Christi, you have in, in their contract, as they develop new water supplies, it affects everybody. They don't, just because it's not your pipeline or your supply, they spread it across the board. So you can expect it to go up as, as they can continue to grow. So as we move forward down on, on the new water supply, which is the P three, seven Cs. So I put all the costs associated with the city's representative cost where they're putting, you're putting in the wells and the supply to the RO system. All-in cost without the boron that we talked about at the last, at the last meeting is about three twenty-six. So it's a little bit less at that point. But increase due to the boron brings it up to three sixty-five. Now that's the high-end price right now. Because as we get through the second well and the boron, if it, if it depletes out of, out of the well system, then you'll decrease your power cost and your operational cost. And so that will be a pass-through that will, that they will deduct that price. But, but they had to price this as we're going to get the same quality of water in the second well. But, so you know exactly where you're going to stand. It's going to be this, this much or less. And so that's, that's where we stand today. From a scheduling standpoint, it looks, the schedule they submitted to me to finish the project fits right in line with the schedule for us to finish the wells. And there's two long lead time items that each of us have to do. They're doing the discharge permit for the concentrate disposal, which probably will take about nine months. Our environmental information document is probably going to take about eight months. And then we hit the ground running. These projects take a little bit of time just because you've got environmental things that there's nothing you can do about it other than go through the system and get that done. So anyway, we'll be working pretty much, hopefully maybe the next meeting or two, we'll have a water, water service agreement for your consideration. And that, that would be our goal. And, and also the Water Development Board's seal of approval as well. And that's, once we get that, then we're off and running.
One, one thing to note on the chart that Bill presented us is on the surface water up on top. So these are two thousand twelve. And, you know, we don't have the thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, but we can gather those. And those were, it may have been probably on average, when we use an average of what it cost us on surface water, we kind of use the three sixty-five to three eighty-five per thousand is kind of our, our range. But one thing to notice on here is there's, Bill, but does not include future capital expenditures for pipeline pumping, station and water plant. There's been money spent that the city hasn't spent, but the water authority has spent that directly would, would, if we spent it, this number would go up. So these numbers are, even though they're representative of what we're paying, there's, it's an additional cost that should be added to here to get a true idea of what, of what the cost per thousand is. So.
And the other thing, Michael, that I did include in here is if you were not going to do this alternative project, we had budgeted ten million dollars for repair of the pipeline. And because of, because you have an alternate source, your pipeline can be out of service and they can repair it. Whereas if you didn't have the alternate source, you, you want to make sure you replace that pipeline. Because you, once you, if you're out of water, that's your only source of water. And so if you did that on its own, that would probably increase it probably at least thirty, thirty or forty cents per thousand gallons.
Counsel, any questions?
So just to be clear, Mike, your statement was, is for simplicity's sake, is the numbers that we see in front of us are our checkbook paying off, to pay off the cost of water. What you're saying is, is that they're not even accounting for a checkbook from a third party that's writing checks in order to do the same job that we're doing alongside of us?
Right.
That would add up hundreds of thousands of dollars more in order to continue to do this here. That would add, bring that number up as well.
Yeah, I mean, there's been costs in the past eighteen months, probably, probably close to two million dollars of shoring up on the pump station at Lake Corpus Christi. We're also looking at, and this is Alice Water Authority money, but looking at, the bridge that goes over there is, is going to need some work also. So some repairs, some motors that were bought and things like that. So those things, they, it's really attributed to this. We're, we're not showing it on here because it's not our, it's not the money that we spent. But you're right, this is our checkbook.
And, and, and just to be clear again, Alice Water Authority money is still taxpayer dollars. It's just a separate taxing entity that gets taxed to our citizens as well. So that money does come out of the pockets of the citizens of Alice as well. So it's hard not to, to see it here, but know that it's being spent. So when we look at this, we're trying to reduce even costs on, at that level, right? So, and that's what this should do for us.
Correct.
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Mullin?
No, I have no questions.
Mr. Burke?
Good.
No? Mrs. Bowen?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
No?
Good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to agenda item number eight, presentation and discussion from EDC Director, Mr. Larry Martinez regarding organizational structure, funding, and ongoing projects. Mr. Martinez, welcome. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's always nice to be back in council's chamber on this side. But thank you all for inviting me over, councils, mayor, counselor, city manager, and staff. You know, when, when I first started this project, I, as the EDC director, it's been a year and a half already. And when we first started, we started thinking, well, what is it that we need to change in order for EDC to work? The constant complaint had always been, well, what does EDC do and what's it they've accomplished? When the previous times that they were there, that position was actually vacated probably for about two years. We had a little bit of a turnover and a change. And there were some issues in regards to what was being done and how it was being done. Of course, it was always the question of the funding for, for the EDC and how it was done prior and what we're currently with right now. But the important things that we thought, that I, I thought and my board thought were important was that we need to change the way we do business in Alice, Jimwells County. And, and the most importantly is why, how do we diversify? And God bless us with oil field because we love oil field. But how is it that we can create other issues in order to promote job growth and to, and to try to get some kind of diversity in Alice, Texas? You know, we have a history of all our grandfathers and our great-grandfathers and everybody that's oilfield-related. And it's kind of come down that line. So we kind of felt that it was important that we start looking at the way you look at, at the way we change things from an educational level. You know, I, I presented to this council, most of this council, I think it was, the last time I was here of changing our higher-level education and looking at different things that we want to, to train some of our skilled workers, high school graduates with and some of the oilfield workers on, how do we train them to get away from oil field and develop a skill set that they can apply for other jobs? Most of all of us know that, you know, a lot of work and a lot of jobs are being provided right now in the San Patricio area and with the steel mill that's going up and the Exxon plant, things of that nature. We felt that it was important that some of the people that we have here learn to develop those skill sets and learn that, that training with a two-year college so they could advance and apply for those jobs. The last thing we wanted was is them not even be qualified. So we looked from the educational aspect, how we can change it and what we can do to make it better. And to qualify our, again, our students, our workforce and everyone that want to apply for jobs. And with, and hopefully that they stay here in Alice, Texas and not leave. Because that, that's the whole point here. Most of the time, people that, that would graduate from, would leave and wouldn't come back. I, I think we all know that story. So, you know, as, as we did that, we concentrated in that. They submitted a bill last legislative session. It did not get passed. It did get to committee. So we're in the process of dealing with, and I had already talked to the mayor about this, of what we're going to do with establishing our relationship with Coastal Bay College. I'm here to tell you that I've had some really good productive calls with some of the representatives. And we're probably going to try to get together and come up with a plan on what is it that we need to do and how we need to improve. So, you know, the doors are open for communicating on what, on what we think is important. And I'll probably look to some of you to give us some input and some feedback on what is you think we need to make it better. So that's a strong thing of, again, education, education of our workforce and the students that are graduating. I've also contributed by doing some studies. And I think some of you or most of you should have copies of some studies that were done through the general land office. General Land Office did a study for us with, with a survey in the community that had some response to it. I would have liked a little bit better, but it had enough response where we got a lot of data from that information. It kind of tell us, told us about what is it we need to do and how we need to do it and how we can improve some of our strengths and weaknesses. And maybe we could build off of that. So by looking at that, y'all might want to look at maybe targeting that as a exercise to develop an action plan, develop an opportunity to see how we can improve. But there's some data there that if you don't have a copy of that, I'll be more than willing to give it to you. And so then you can take a look at it. We can study it. We also went through the, what they call the IC two program with the University of Texas. That also provided us with some information and data. So I've tried to provide the city council members and some of the county officials as well. Because, you know, we do have a good working relationship as far as working together and trying to provide what we need for, for job growth, job creation. So we, we looked at the studies that we provided for information because we lacked of that. We want to make sure we have that. We have the education. And then we looked at what are our tax policies or our tax incentives are. Most of us that approved that, I think Councilman Chris did that, worked in that, this council worked in that tax program that was really a good program providing incentives for any companies that are wanting to locate here and stay here in Alice or Jimwells County. Again, when, in, everywhere you go, it's a known fact that it's competitive. If I get a company that wants to come over here, I guarantee you, there's ten other cities that are buying for those positions. But the city of Alice and, and the county commissioners' court recognized that we provide that incentive. So we have that in play. And I think that's important that we're working on basic tools and how we can make EDC and how we can make Alice, Jimwells County competitive. We're, we're registered with the governor's office on looking on new companies that are relocated to Texas. Just today, I got a, a lead that I'm going to submit, and they give you like a three-day period to submit the leads. That's for a company that provides eight hundred jobs. They tell you they need, you know, two hundred acres. They tell you they need rail. They tell you what it is that they're requesting. Most of the time, you know, they, their demand is three hundred, four hundred thousand square foot buildings, which we don't have in town. But most of the time, it's land, land with the rail and land with access to water and to gas and to electricity. Those are the important components of what makes a city attractive. Because before, before a company comes into this town, that's the first thing to look at. Do you have the power to run that plant? Do you have the water capacity to maintain what you're going to do for that plant and your residential people? Those are real critical points. And I've had some, some companies that called that we could match a three hundred and fifty KBW transmission line that was not in Alice, Texas. Now, we all know how that grid thing worked and all the stuff there. So those are the things that we're constantly working on, constantly talking to our legislatures. How do we do that? How do we get access to it? So, you know, it's a process. There's education, there's studies, there's tax incentives, and then providing the infrastructure. Of course, the infrastructure that you guys work on are sewer and water lines. How do we make those better? How we, you know, that's always a constant issue. But when I was the councilman back, those were issues. And, and we realized that, you know, that we are working in ways to make those that every round and every council does to make it better. Now, not only do we do that, but we also build relationships, you know, building a relationship with, with the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Company. I just attended a summit probably about, I don't know, it's been three or four weeks ago. We all got together and we discussed some of the issues affecting our areas and some of the areas that have things that other areas don't have. You know, Alice is good for, for the rail. Alice has got a good rail. We're centrally located. And we also have availability of land. So, you know, these are the components that we're putting together. And we're meeting with our neighbors to develop these processes. So I, it, it's a constant work with EDC. It's a constant process on telling our, our neighbors and our, and our people, you know, we have, we have possibilities. We're building up our infrastructure. We're building up some of the things that we need in order to be competitive. It, it, it never ends, guys. It's always something. But I'm, I'm proud to say that we are making some headway with that. You know, when, when we look at other development, you know, how, how do we do that? How, how, what are the things that we need to do? Well, I just heard the presentation from Mr. Norris. And I think this started way back when we did stuff with, how do we make that water supply more effective? And, you know, that, that transmission line goes out, we have some issues. But now that y'all are looking at the water supply and redevelopment, have an alternate source, that's going to be something that I can sell as well. And I have to have those items to sell. The grid, land sites availability, you know, the industrial park we have, there's a lot of vacant buildings. We need to become, we need those sites to become available to us and have that, that land bank. So trying to establish a land bank also is available because on any given day, someone will call me and ask me, what do you have? And I need this building. I need this building. Where do you have it? I have to have access to that. And I have to know where it is and how it is, how competitive it is, and what it is that they're selling for. So, you know, we promote Alice at the regional level all the time. We've, we've, I think we, we can do a better job of how we promote Alice because we have two major highways. We have, you know, we're originally located. And every time we've gone somewhere, that's the first big question people ask me. Where are y'all located? Well, right between forty-four and twenty-one, two hubs that are, that are major. And as a matter of fact, the governor's request that was just submitted to me asked for those requests. So that's a big plus for us. We have easy access to major metropolitan cities. But we also need to apply for grants to promote local businesses. I, I think that's something that we need to do. Local businesses, facades for downtowns. Well, right now, we're currently working with U-Mall owners. I don't know some of you, I've shared that information. The mall is under a different ownership now. And we've actually had some communications with them. In the past, we didn't even communicate because they were a group out of spring. So, you know, the mall is, is looking at extending. They're putting some leads out there. They're actively working to improve it. They're actively working to develop pad sites to bring other businesses there. We're just have to be in the forefront to be able to catch it, make sure that we're, we're giving the incentives that we can, when we can. We, we have opportunities for some type, well, some developers that are wanting to locate in town. There are some developers that got some parcels here that have been working on for years that are asking for not money incentives, but maybe in-kind incentives. And I'll give, let me give you an example. You know, the cost of land, now the cost of material is expensive, you know, with lumber and everything going up. But in order to minimize the cost of producing raw land, it costs money. And that is going to be passed on to the, to the residential or the commercial owner. So what I'm suggesting, we, we can look at is how do we facilitate that and minimize that cost? At some point, the subject that's good for deliberation in your council is, do we provide them in-kind service with, where they're, they don't call super crude, but what are they called, Michael?
Maintenance construction.
Maintenance construction, yeah. You know, they provide the, they provide the material, they provide, then we could maybe offset that cost by doing the actual work for the water sewer lines. There's an avenue and a plus of how we do those things. And, and there's always ways that we can manufacture or come up with ways to make it easier for people that want to go into the community. So you can tell that, you know, there's, there's a lot of work to be done. And there's a lot of, and a lot of ways to do it. But we, we have to be behind it and solidly working towards it. On the board that I, that I am on, or the board that for the EDC is Mr. Kevin Downs, Mr. Tom Turner, Ms. Gail Hoffman, and Mr. Richard Johnson. Our ex-officios, our Judge Rodriguez, our mayor is on that committee, and Michael as well is on that committee as well. So, you know, we have a good group of people that we meet on a regular basis to discuss some of these issues and discuss how we can always improve and what is it we need to do. So some of my suggestions are, you know, as, as we work together, I, I know that we're, we're setting up a meeting with Jose Pereira, our council, excuse me, our, our federal, I get some of your mixed up, which for Phil Bondella, our congressman, he's working with us because we want to do some work with the B-bill group. B-bill group was just successful here recently where they provided some, a company that was coming out of Dubai. So we want to meet with those individuals who we are, Michael and I, and let's say have a, a meeting set up so we can discuss some of the potentials that are there. Because this, this area is getting ripe for that. We're getting more businesses and more companies in, in South Texas. You know, the triangle of Houston, San Antonio, and Dallas is our major competitors. How do we get things down to South Texas and work that corridor back down towards the valley? I think we're making some arrows of what we did a year and a half ago. But it's, it's not as fast as all of us wanted to be, guys. I'll be real honest with you. So, you know, so those are some of the things that we're promoting. Those are some of the things that we're working on to, to attract, build relationships with people with pork, build relationships with all our neighbors, our county judges and, and councils. Thursday, I got a meeting with the Premont Chamber of Commerce. And they want to do a project as well and their council. So, you know, again, bringing everybody together. And, and the key of, of working together is if we can't get it in our city, then we get it in our county. Okay? If we can't get it in our county, then we get it in our region. Because the concept here is that those jobs could be, some of those jobs could be from Alice, Texas. And we're optimistic. And we know that we can do that. But we have to have the skill set strength and the employee's strength so they can apply for those jobs. So we're constantly working on, on looking at avenues. We're constantly working on looking at different resources and people that we connect with so that we can make sure that Alice is known, Alice is marketable, and we're in competition.
I appreciate your presentation.
So I know, I know I'm going too long, but I'd just like to finish up with, and I'm sorry for talking so much. I get real wound up about this. I, I'd like to see us at some point suggest an analogy deliberations or, or coming up with budget. Maybe there's something that y'all could look at for prioritizing our needs and our wants. Invest in several monies in EDC to match some of the stuff we might need for grants that we apply. Those are some of the things I have. Maybe evaluate some of the federal monies to the, to the stimulus program that we're obtaining. If we can look at that, I would be appreciative of that. So I, I'm willing to work with each and every one of you guys to be able to develop that process. I'm here to, to, to do that. So I just wanted to let you know that we're here for that. So.
Oh, I appreciate it.
You have any other questions? I, I went too far, didn't I? I went too fast.
You're fine.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate it. We do have our budget workshops. So I'd like to open it up right now for council if you have any questions or comments in, in reference to EDC. Mr. Chris?
None.
Mr. Mullin?
Okay.
Mr. Burke?
Y'all, y'all, y'all know where I'm at. I mean, see, hold up. Just give me a holler bell. Any questions later.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Agenda item number nine is here. Presentation and discuss, consider, and act upon applying for NTIA National Telecommunication and Information Administration Fiber High-Speed Internet Broadband Infrastructure Program Grant within the city of Alice in conjunction, I'm sorry, with VTX one and one authorizing city, city manager to apply and sign all documents and two to allocate matching funds.
Mayor, there's, was scheduling conflict with VTX. And so they weren't going to be able to, to make it tonight. But we're going to touch base with them and see when they can show up again. So I'd ask that this agenda be tabled.
Okay. Counsel, may I have a motion to table this agenda item or further, until further?
Motion to table.
Second. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. All opposed, same sign. Sorry. Motion carries. Item is tabled. Agenda item number ten, presentation and discussion, discussion from Chair Victor, Mr. Victor Garcia with Alice Hub City Chamber of Commerce updates. Mr. Garcia, thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, counsel, for the opportunity to come back before you. It's been a while, been about a year, I think now. And what a year. But it's, it's been a good year. We've been doing a lot and, and getting some things. But it's, it's been a good year and we've been doing a lot and, and getting some things done. Wanted to come and give you an update, upgrade. I'll have to go off my notes. Put that away. All right. All right, so I'm Victor Garza, Chair of the Alice Hub City Chamber of Commerce. As I mentioned, we've been around for about a year now in one form or another. We are officially, I guess, birthed in November when we filed our articles incorporation with the state and set our first board. We are a organization of people that came together, saw a need in the community and tried to fill that need. We've been working diligently over the past year. It's been a process. We try to be purposeful in what we do and do things by design and lay a good groundwork, groundwork for what we're trying to do. We have, I'm going to go through a little quick recap of what we're going to talk about today. I do want to give you a recap. We had our first sort of community event just this past weekend here in downtown Alice and I'll give you a recap of that. And we had some things, information I want to present to you. We are currently in the process of our board elections for our next term, which will start October. And then we are, they have kicked off our membership drive and want to give you a little bit of a calendar of some of the things we have planned coming up that are in the process and then talk a little bit about ways we can work together, we being the Chamber of Commerce and the city council. So, as I said, we had our first community event over the weekend that was a market days. So, this was our, sort of a test drive of things we can do, put together and work with the city. I want to start off by commending a city manager and his staff. They've done a great job working with our team to, to try to get this event to be a success. It's been, it was, it was a process, but it was a very successful process and it was easy to work with, with the city staff. It was very helpful and it was refreshing to see. So, our event resulted in we had 15 vendors, including one of the food trucks. 15 vendors estimated revenues of about $8,000 in that, in that day. It was a hot day, I'll tell you that. Another kudos to your staff being out there. We, we were giving them waters as much as we could because it was, it was very hot even at 8:00 AM in the morning. So, I think this is one of the key takeaways. We had 13 first-time vendors. These are people who have been thinking about starting a business, trying to test the waters and what they can do. Maybe they've been doing it out of their home, especially over COVID the past year, but they wanted to come out and to event. This is their first time doing an event. 12 of them were local from our area. We define local as either Alice or the surrounding area. And like I said, 12 of them, this was their first event and they had a good taste of, of what it takes to, to do these type of events and the, the success that can come for them. So, again, want to give out thanks to, to city staff on, on all the assistance for getting that done and for council for helping and allowing them to do it. A little bit more information. So, we did take a survey of some of our attendees. Like I said, we're being purposeful in what we're trying to do and we're, one of the things behind that is to get some good data so we can report back. We were able to survey a few of people. So, I'll, I'll tell you the heat did have a, a factor on that in terms of the time that we were doing the survey. We picked a random two-hour sample. It happened to be one of the hotter times. So, we didn't get too many sub responses, but of the ones we did, we were able to create a profile of the attendee. The average attendee was over 55 and from the Alice area. Two-thirds of them did plan to make this sort of a centerpiece of their outing for the day so that they were going to visit a restaurant. And another half of those, or half of the people that attended, were also going to be visiting another retailer, again, making this sort of their Saturday outing. So, some quotes that we took and I've broken down in categories. So, from attendees, you see, we heard people say that it looks like a great event and would definitely come back. They're excited to see that there was an event in the first place. They like the streets being blocked off and they like being in downtown. I think that added to the ambience. You, in talking to some of the vendors, and this isn't in the quotes, but in talking to some of the vendors, you know, they have their, they, they go to these events on, on, either on their own or through their, their business. And some of the ones that have done the other events, and they were saying that they, you know, they're usually in parking lots behind some building down, not even downtown. So, to be in the center of town at Main Street, I think that was a, a real selling point for this, this event and is, is what adds to the charm of the event. Some of the, the vendors themselves, we, we talked to them. They said this was a good way for us to get customers, again, trying to grow their customer base. And I'll just, I put this one here because I like it. It was a, it was a good quote. This was from the kettle corn vendor. She said they hadn't been able to keep up with demand and the smells were the best advertising for them. We did talk to some of the downtown business owners. We, we understand that it, it, you know, caused some concern of, of whether or not it would be an issue for them in certain terms of their business. And we have the quote here from one of the downtown business owners. They said compared to normal Saturdays, they've seen a lot of people they don't normally see. So, they're getting, we're getting people to come out downtown that don't usually do so. I think that's a, a big benefit for this event. So, that's a wrap-up on the event. We have chamber board of elections. Like I said, they're coming up. We're currently looking for nominations. The way we do it, we do stagger terms. We have 15 total seats. We do five seats every year. Right now, five seats are open. Our terms are for three years. So, having just started off, we did do kind of a drawing of straws of how the terms were going to be. So, the people who are up now had only a one-year term. They are allowed to run again, but we are taking nominations for anybody that wants to run for those positions. Chamber board membership drive. So, we actually had our, we had a little event on, on our event on Saturday at the market days where we did kind of a signing day type style where all of our board members officially filled out the paperwork and people that have helped our process came by as well to, to do it like you would see those letters of intent that high school kids do when they're going to college for athletics or others. So, we did, we did that and that was a kickoff and now we are in full membership drive mode. You'll probably be getting calls or visits soon. People, and I, I did list this out here. This is just a, a quick synopsis, but you know, we have detailed information on the actual membership application forms. But we, we did break it down into categories. We have small businesses which are 1 through 50 employees and that's $125. That's going to be kind of our big meet in the middle of the, of the bell curve of, of our members. And like I said, it's $125 and you get one rep, one member that gets to be part of the chamber. Businesses with 50 to 99 employees, we classify them as medium size, then you get two reps and that's for $175. Businesses with 100-plus employees, $250, three reps. We have a few here in town that we are going to target for that, but you know, that's, that's the high level one. We did create a separate category just for restaurant retail regardless of the size. Want to keep the cost down for them just because they, they are, you know, profit margins are thin in that, in that area, so we wanted to keep the cost down. We offer $125 just across the board no matter the size and they get one rep for it. Individual memberships are available as well for $125 and we created a nonprofit category so nonprofits can join as well at the $50 level. So, calendar update. These are some of the events that we've been working on. We are finalizing these and hopefully we'll be launching in the next couple of weeks for, for at least the, actually all of them. We will be doing a monthly lunch and learn series. We have reached out to our partners in the region, Workforce Solutions, SBDC out of Del Mar, which covers our area. We've been talking to their app. They, they used to do some of these in, in the past and they're looking forward to the opportunity to start bringing them back. And we're going to have them kind of post our first ones just to establish those partnerships again, bring those resources back to the community. Monthly networking mixers. This is kind of the, the bread and butter of chamber work that most people think of when they think of a chamber. We're going to start those up again, you know, with, with our great vaccination rate, we are able to do these and, and sort of start going back to some of these live in-person events. These are the great ones that everyone enjoys and it will be a way to highlight our businesses and highlight membership of joining the chamber. And then we're going to try to schedule for biweekly ripping cuttings. This has not been finalized yet as far as doing it this way, but that way, everyone knows when ripping cuttings are and they can schedule around it. Obviously, if there's something that falls out of that, we would work with the people, but try to get a steady schedule so everyone can sort of planning around it. And then like I said, ways to work together. You know, we are a new organization. We're proud to be here in the community. We're made up of members of the community who have an interest and have a drive to, to help in this field and to grow our community and grow our business community. We want to work with, with the city council and find ways where we can partner together. And I think one of the first steps that we, that Mr. Martinez talked about was bringing everybody together and I think that's, that's a great idea. One of the things, and I, it's, I started thinking about it when Mr. Martinez mentioned it, is, you know, coming together and working off of a plan. That's one thing that, you know, when we first started this work is in terms of the chamber and creating the chamber, we tried to make a plan of, you know, here's the steps we need to do and here's the process. So, and we're doing that now and we're doing it for a work plan as well. Well, we wanted to see if there's a work plan for the community. A community-wide strategic plan is something that would be very beneficial and we would love to be a part of. And when I say part of, you know, participate, but also see what we can bring to the table in terms of making it happen, whether it be funds or staff or volunteers, I should be more accurate. We, we want to be a part of that and we want to have those conversations and like I said, we're new, but we're ready to get to work. With that, I'll take any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Ms. Mullin? Mr. Burke?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Chris?
At this time, thank you.
Well, I want to thank you for this presentation.
I answered all the questions, that's all.
Yes. Very thorough.
Very thorough. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Victor.
You're reaching out. Thank you.
On to agenda item number 11. Conduct a public hearing to discuss, consider, and act upon accepting the planning and zoning commission's recommendation for the final plot showing Block 1, Block 2, 0.376 acre of Matilda Street, 0.116 acre alley, 0.296 acre tract, and 0.266 acre tract being a replat of Jesus Medina subdivision establishing Lot 1 in Block 1 containing 2.511 acres, part of the Jose Maria Garcia survey abstract number 166, Jimwells County, Texas. Hold on one there. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel.
Mr. Thomas is going to be presenting this.
Well, I'll just give you some information and then you'll, you'll open the, actually there's no public hearing for this, right? This is just a, yeah, this is just a rezoned, I mean, this is just a replat, so there's no public hearings required for replats. This property is a property that was a residential property that was rezoned, I believe, at one of your last council meetings or the council meeting before that. This agenda item is for the replat of the property that's combining the residential lots into one big commercial lot. This is for future development of some, of a grocery store in that area.
Mr. Chris?
Was there a, a change to the way that we needed to, to pass this? Because the recommendation was to, to, but how was it? Hold on one second. It was, because if we take the recommendation, that went against what I thought we talked about before.
The recommendation was to approve the, we have the condition that it came out of the planning, the, the recommendation was to approve it with abandonment of Matilda right-of-way and then the alley. Problem is that you can't abandon a street without, it's got to be done by organs. You've got to conduct a public hearing, you've got to send out notice and those types of things. Planning and zoning pretty much knew this and brought it up to Patrick at the time, but they went ahead and put those conditions on there. You all can still approve it without those conditions.
Okay. That was all. I wanted to make sure that if we, we approved it, that we didn't approve it as recommended. We need to prove it with the conditions as.
I, I, staff recommendation is to approve it with the, not, not abandoning the, any, any of the, of the street or eastments that were there. The problem is that there's some power lines that run through there that require to keep that eastment there, so. I think the attorney can tell you a little bit more of how to properly move this forward, I guess.
Okay. I just didn't want to move forward with that. I mean, because they brought it to your attention, to y'all's attention as well, so they knew that this was something that was going to have to be changed as well. So, that was, that was the only thing that I had.
Yeah, your recommendation would be without the abandonment.
Correct. Just the way it is. Not, not the way it is drawn up, because as it's drawn up, it talks about abandonment of the street. The way it's standing and the, the way it is on the area.
Right, that's what I was going to say.
The recommendation, they said to do it, we're going to do it without the abandonment. So, this is wrong.
Our agenda item is, is not stated correctly or?
No, the agenda item is stated correctly. The, and, and, you know, it's, it gets to be as clear as mud as you start to get into the minutia of it, Mayor. What's, what's going on is that they wanted to replat this area. They wanted to take basically two block areas and an additional area that was undivided and merge it into one so they could go ahead, that used to be the Jesus Medina subdivision and merge it into one so they could go ahead and use it as in its entirety for construction of their, their family dollar, right? Dollar general. Dollar general. It's going to, I apologize, Dollar General. Well. But they were going to do that. And so, so as they, when they presented it, there were some issues. Matilda Street has never been developed. It's still a right-of-way, it's still planted, it's still there. We can't get rid of the right-of-way without following a proper, proper abandonment procedures or closure procedures. It's really not necessary here because they're not going to construct in the right-of-way that is or should have been Matilda Street. Neither are they going to perform their building construction in the areas of the alleyway and those types of things. So, really, there's no reason for that. They're going to own it. It's, they're going to own it in common. They're the only property owners. And so, any issues with regards to a setback, that can be done by variance, that can be done by code enforcement. As Patrick alluded to, there's things in these easements like a high-line electrical easement that we can't get rid of it anyway. We can't get rid of that easement. They can't construct in that area anyway because of other easements that are recorded. And so, what we came up with is just to have it recommended, the plaque, to have it replanted to allow what they wanted to do with the exception of the abandonment of the street or the right-of-way from Matilda and the exception abandonment of the alleyways. And then they can go ahead and get it replanted and go from there. If issues come up in the future in regards to problems with the street or lack of necessity or as things develop out there, they just, the tent, the owners in common don't want it there anymore, then at that time, we could go through an abandonment process or a street closure process. But at this juncture, for them, construction is really not necessary. Okay? Say it right, man.
That is correct. Explain it so much better.
So, we wouldn't leave out the alley on there because it's all.
So, what I would recommend is if you're going to approve the plaque, then approve[1619.32] So what I would recommend is if you're going to approve the plaque, then approve the plaque without the conditions that Matilda Street be abandoned and that the alleyways be abandoned.
There's other, there's other alleys, but just the name, the Matilda or alley?
Just as I said.
Okay. All right.
Two alley, alleyways.
There's two, it's, it's a.
Yes, okay.
And that there are no utilities on those alleys, we don't have the water, sewer lines are just, they were just dedicated.
And the only possible encroachment into our right-of-way alley, which really will not be, is they're going to bury a water line or sewer line.
Sewer line.
Sewer line there, and people are allowed to, to do those types of things in the alleys and these alleys and everything, so.
But we'll be presented with other, we're just approving the plot, the.
You're just approving.
We're not approving anything else, other than.
Just a plot.
Without the abandonment.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm good.
Counsel, any other questions? No? I will entertain a motion for Agenda Item Number 11.
Mayor, I make a motion for approval of the plaque presented with the exception of the abandonment on Matilda Street and the alleyway, for mention.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. May I, all in favor, say aye. Sorry, aye. All opposed, say sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Who did the second?
Robert.
I was like, Robert.
Thank you, Patrick.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number 12. Discuss, consider, and act upon a resolution on an offer to purchase tax sale property suit number 08-09-14458-B, Jimwells County, Texas, City of Alice, Alice Independent School District, Alice Water Authority versus James Evans, also known as Lot 5, Block 1, HF McGill Re subdivision, in addition to the City of Alice, Jimwells County, Texas, as described in Volume 225, Page 11, deed records of Jimwells County, Texas. Counsel, before I, y'all discussed this, I did mention to our legal counsel that I, I noticed the name of the, the buyer for this, and he's been a past client of mine, I have no interest in this and no conflict of interest, but I wanted to make sure at least, and counsel, you said that, we were okay.
I didn't even think you needed to bring it up.
Well, I wanted to be transparent, so.
Everything is fine, you're not gaining any, he's just somebody that you know.
Right. Okay, so, wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am, you're fine.
Okay.
Well, I'll file your.
All right, counsel, any discussion or?
Yeah, this is a property that Leinberg, Goggins, Blair and Sampson brought to us, tax for, tax resale, the net to the city is $551.15, and 15 cents, and so, it doesn't look like, in their letter, I don't think they brought it to any of the other entities.
They haven't seen it.
Actually, on, on March 8th, it did go to the school board, and so, we're recommending approving the Agenda Item as presented.
Counsel. No questions? Mr. Burke? No? At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I can make a motion. Approving the resolution to offer, I offered to purchase tax sale property suit number 8914458B, Jimwells County, Texas, City of Alice, Alice Independent School District, Alice Water Authority versus James Evans, also known as Lot 5, Block 1, HF McGill Re subdivision, in addition to the City of Alice, Jimwells County, Texas, as described in Volume 225, 177 deed records, Jimwells County, Texas.
Second. We have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Okay, we move on to Agenda Item Number 13. The city council may enter into closed or executive session for the following matters. A, attorney consultation pursuant to Section 551.071, one Texas government code to provide legal advice and counsel in connection with the city's legal rights, duties, privileges, and obligations under Chapter 174. Texas local government code arising out of the pending collective bargaining negotiations between the City of Alice and the duly recognized majority bargaining agent for the city's Alice Police Department personnel. Two, Section 551.072, Texas government code pertaining to deliberations about real property, i.e. contract negotiations concerning potential renovations, construction, and relocation of Alice Fire Department and Alice Police Department. Okay? It is now 5:43, and we will go down to executive session.
Now, okay, we're back from the executive session. It is now 7:25 PM, 7:26 PM, sorry.
Okay.
And we'll open agenda item number 13.
Mayor and council members, the next item on the agenda is the...
Let me go ahead and open. Okay, so we're returning to open session to deliberate, consider, and take any action necessary as a result of discussion in the immediately preceding agenda item number 13, A Attorney Consultation Pursuant to Section 551.071, One Texas Government Code to Provide Legal Advice and Counsel in Connection with the City's Legal Rights, Duties, Privileges, and Obligations under Chapter 174 Local Government Code arising out of the pending collective bargaining negotiations between the City of Alice and the duly- duly recognized majority bargaining agent for the city's Alice Police Department personnel. Two, Section 551.072 Texas Government Code pertaining to deliberations about real property contract negotiations considered concerning potential renovations, construction, and relocation of Alice Fire Department and Alice Police Department. I'm sorry.
Perfect. Mayor and council members, so what I'm here before you today is the collective bargaining agreement that your city manager and the association, the PD Association have, they've been negotiating amongst themselves for a while now, and they have come, you know, they've agreed upon this draft that you have before you. And so, one of the major things that, that are typically negotiated in these agreements are fiscal increases for the next few years. In this case, it's three years. So tied with those fiscal increases are going to be overtime savings and, and other provisions that the city manager and the associations have negotiated. But mainly, the overtime savings will trigger the fiscal increases for, and base pay for the police officers. So those are the main, that's the main thing really of this, of this contract. So my understanding, it's not gone before the police association yet, so the step tonight will be approval by the city council. It'll then go to the police association for ratification, and then that's it. So the motion that you all would take tonight, if that is what you choose to do, and it is the staff's recommendation that this contract get approved, but the motion would be to approve the collective bargaining labor agreement between the City of Alice and the Alice Police Officers Association. Is there any questions that you have about this contract?
No question.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the contract as presented and allow city manager to introduce the target to the sub-association sign.
Second. Okay, I have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. So number two, I opened that up already. Any discussion, council? In reference to the contract negotiations and renovations?
I have no questions.
No questions.
At this time.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to allow for the move of fire station number one to relocate to the armory and authorize city manager to begin renovations of the police department and up to $100,000 for the fire department, and further authorize the city manager to negotiate purchase of real estate for those renovations.
Second.
On the police department.
Would you like your...
Continue, I state.
Second.
Okay. We have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. So now we go ahead and move to agenda item number 15. Discuss, Consider, and Act Upon Establishment, Dissolution, Division, and/or Reorganization of the Alice Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Do you appoint appointments, reappointments, removal, and/or term clarification of appointments, vacancies, and/or memberships of the City of Alice Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Three, approval of committee application. Four, assign individual and/or adopt a process or outreach program to invite members of the public to apply to approved committees. This is sponsored by, I placed this on here, and then sponsored also by council member Sandra Bowen. Yes, so do you have anything you would like to mention on this?
Sure, thank you, mayor. I mainly just want to have council look at the binder that they gave us on the boards and committees here, commissions. There's, there's 12 here. I'd like to probably have those approved, that these are the 12 that we're going to go ahead and go forward with. And just leave it as that, because I want to come back and I want city staff and myself, or whoever else wants to help, make sure that the, every board that's here has bylaws or, or, or city ordinance that backs it up. Something similar to what you did, Mr. Crisp, on each one with the rec, rec one. So that, that's my recommendation that we can do that.
I'd like to also go through and see the, the actual application itself updated.
It's updated on...
I think we updated it.
Is it?
There's a tab for the application on, in, on the notebook.
It's after the first section, writing for table of contents. It's after that.
Does this application have to be approved by council, or?
We did ask on the, on the agenda item, I believe we did.
This didn't come out with this, with the agenda. It came, this was something that was separate.
It was a separate, let me see, keep going, you're almost there. That's right there. Sorry, we moved the other ones.
See, there's only nine listed. She had said something about 12.
Well, I think that for some, it doesn't take like an application. For some, it's just the mayor.
It's appointed, the mayor has one in the airport.
Gotcha.
It does have...
But just to have the 12.
It's not on, it's not on that, that, it's not in our agenda packet.
It's not.
It's a, it was a separate.
It's a separate, separate document.
I want to go get, get us some extra binders.
That's fine, I can overlook it.
You want to, here, here you go, Mr. Chris.
That's fine, I'll, I'll look it up.
The application, because this is the updated one.
I have it right here.
You found it?
Yeah, they had, they had uploaded it to my OneDrive, but I didn't get it. It was part of the packet or a separate binder.
Because we figured you all were going to want to keep it if it was approved.
Yeah. Because I didn't even look over this, because I didn't know this was part of today's, you know, what we were going to actually go through.
Here's a couple of extra books you all can have. Oh, that one's fine, okay.
No, I've got one here. I mean, I've got the one that you all uploaded to the OneDrive. I hadn't seen it, I hadn't seen it. It's actually kind of strange, though, the way it is. It's not per page.
You want to go on, please?
Nope, I got her here.
Okay.
Have to get it for my OneDrive into my app.
Oh, okay.
There we go. Now, we got it. Now, we're good to go.
Do you have the list also, Mr. Crisp?
Yes.
Okay.
The airport, committee, housing, water, Board of Adjustments, building, building and standards, coastal ban, council governments, general appraisal, keep Alice beautiful, library, planning and zoning, and public regulation.
These are kind of the, the list that we kind of went through the last, at our last city council meeting. I just want to make sure that we all agree.
Yeah, this is going to be the list. This is where we're going to go by and start cleaning it and organizing it and all that. If we need to relook at that application, I know it doesn't have some of the, doesn't have the water authority or the housing authority, and those are different.
Or the housing and zoning, but...
Right. But, but, I mean, it could still be on the application.
It's on the list here.
On the list, but on the application.
Oh, so you want them on the application.
I mean, if, if you guys wanted those on the application, even though it's an appointment, still, if somebody has an interest, you'd want to know.
Yes.
Did you just point out where the, the mayor makes those determinations without involvement of council?
Right.
So the mayor can disregard the application. It'd just be a tool that the mayor would have to identify people who are interested.
Right.
Anything that they voted on, it was the application would not be binding with the rest of those committees.
Okay.
We had also talked about the, the Business Advisors Committee with Patrick, but we didn't list it on here. I guess we'll just kind of bring that one back around if we actually get the bylaws written up for it, because we don't have anything for it right now.
Right. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Our application has different committees than what we have listed on...
Yeah, that's...
On the list here, so... We still have the ambassadors. We have what, I guess we can...
Yeah, we, I think, I mean, we still need to clean this up.
Yeah, clean up the application.
We just, we want like, like...
Direction.
Final confirmation from last meeting to this meeting that these are them.
These are the, the boards and committees. Council? Please, Mr. Burke, can you?
Yeah.
On the 12th, you're good with these?
I'm good with it.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Crisp?
Give me a second, please. I'd like to read over stuff real quick before I approve it. I didn't even know that this was actually the part of the thing. Just as listing, as a listing of the boards, I'm okay with this listing for us to, to begin an actual movement on these boards.
This is to clean it up and give direction. We can always add if later we want to come back.
Well, we're not necessarily dissolving anything. These are the ones that we're going to focus on for the...
Right, the ones we're focusing on.
Let me find it back.
Okay. And the application will just do a couple of modifications.
We'll add all these.
Okay.
And I think that we're, I think that, that council, council member Owen is correct that we really need to have a, a hard set purpose and a mission statement or something for each one of these boards, because a lot of times you get people who apply for these boards, but they don't really know anything but the name of them.
Sure.
So, you know, I, I think we need to get to a point where people are being appointed to a board for at least something they've picked up the bylaws for, that they know what they're actually getting themselves in for, and they're not just saying, yeah, I want to be a part of the, you know, the Parks and Rec Board, but their vision of Parks and Rec Board is what it was, not what it is.
Right.
Right? So the idea is, you know, just to make sure that we have something set in stone, like she says, so that we get people that are involved, and they know what they're getting involved in.
Sure. Well, this will give at least staff guidance, and then we can go...
We can start hammering down each one of those.
Right.
Very good.
That's good, okay. And then, I think, as far as the members on there, you know, staff went through, each director that was in charge of each of these boards also went through them, and they're pretty current. There's a view that we still need to clarify, right?
Yolanda and Patrick are the ones with some, some of the boards, and then Michael has maybe two written, and then that one.
And then, of course, once we, we post this, we're going to invite our, our public to come on and apply for these committees that, that are available.
Yeah. Very good.
So, council, have a motion on this?
Do, do you take a motion on this, or it's just that...
It says act upon. We did it, but establish.
You, I mean, you can or you can't. It, it really doesn't matter if you want to do it, but it would, if you want to make motion saying these are our 12 boards and committees, that gives us like a definite...
Well, then, at that point, we're basically saying we're dissolving everything, every other one.
I have motion dissolving the existing committee list and retaining these 12 committees.
I mean, I state.
That's what you want to do.
Okay.
But you've got all, you have people on those committees still.
If, if they're not here, they're, they're not...
Then it's not an active committee.
From that long list, they are not active. They were dissolved already. We just gave you that long list, so...
In the last meeting, we went through 60 of them in order to come up with 12 that were active.
That's the whole point, to clean it up, so.
Right. Yes, sir.
Sounds good. So, do I make a motion?
Why you look at me?
Why you look at me?
It's like, like Mayor Galisco said, we can add later, I mean, you know.
You can always add, but if you're gonna take action tonight, and if you wanna say moving forward that these are the 12 committees you're gonna work with, and your motion will be dissolving any existing boards, not on this list, but retaining these 12, and then you can name the 12 that are being retained. Or you can just pull up.
Do you wanna wait and revisit this?
Or do we just, do we just make a motion to, to state that these are, are active focuses of.
Can we do that?
To dissolve?
Yeah, you, you, I mean, basically, you, you can make whatever comment you want, you can just say, look, these are the boards that we've identified as active and move on, and then you can take action later, or you can take action later, however you wanna do it.
It seems like this, these are the ones that you guys want, we know they are, so if you don't wanna take any action on it, we're gonna bring these back and we'll start working on them, based on the conversation that we have here. So, either way, whoever they wanna do it, right?
I think so. I think just to move forward and then we can look at it a little bit closer, and say these are gonna be the active ones, and then come back.
May I make a motion to establish the 12 said, stated boards or committees as, uh, um.
As presented on.
As stated by. I haven't said, I haven't said.
By John.
I don't even, and I don't have the notebook in front of me.
Something like, some of the, we.
The 12 boards that you have, Mr. Millen, are, it boards or commissions, the airport committee, the Alice Housing Authority, the Alice Water Authority, the Board of Adjustments, the Builders Advisory Board, Building and Standards Commission, Coastal Ban Council of Governments, General County Appraisal District Board of Directors, Keep Alice Beautiful Community, Library Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Public Recreation Advisory Committee. As stated. As well as the dissolution of any existing.
Boards not included in that list?
Not included in the list.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you have a first and a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
And, 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 Mayor, if you don't mind, I make one statement. That this, that any, any committee that we just, um, removed from our active list does not negate the fact that we want our citizens to come forward back to us if they wanna reopen this. As stated by the mayor, anything we can reactivate, a lot of these committees have been dissolved and reactivated repeatedly over time, so if there is, if you feel there is a need for a committee or, or a board, uh, do not hesitate to come back to council and say, hey, we feel like this one needs to be reactivated, the, the reason that this went forward is because those boards have not been active. So if this is what it takes to fire up, uh, the citizens to get involved, then we're gonna do it, y'all come back to us, the citizens, and we will continue to work for the citizens and get these boards reactivated, if there is a need for it, and if you can present it, that it's gonna be active, so.
Definitely.
And now we put it on our citizens to actually get involved on that, on that, on that behalf, so.
And that's what this is all about, is getting our citizens involved and working together, the city and, and the citizens of Alice, working together for the improvement and the betterment of our community.
Yes.
So, thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Pete.
Counsel. Mr. Lemon.
I want, I just wanna clarify on the agenda item.
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
On the agenda item, I just wanted to clarify, we have four parts to this, um, so do we need to state that we're not gonna?
We have four parts to the one, two, three, and four?
Yeah.
If you wish to take no further action on the agenda item, then.
We need, just.
Then you do.
Okay. Thank you.
I couldn't hear you, Mayor, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
It's, it's these things.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, counsel. And again, we do invite our, the public to come forward and, and let us know if you'd like to volunteer on a committee, and they'll be posted soon, so, thank you. Great, so moving on to agenda item number 16, here, a status report on May 2021, monthly financial statements and summary of funds and delivery of May 2021 check registry and discussion on sales tax revenues. Thank you, Mr. Galmas.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I try to be great.
Thank you for hanging around. Gotta wake up, Roland, wake up.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Our general fund revenues, this is for the eight months and, ending May 31st, 2021, we should be about 66.64% right now of our budget. And, uh, year-to-date, we're at $7,688,572, which is about 65 point, 65 and a quarter percent. So, it's almost one and a half, one and a half percent under our budget of revenues, that's excluding the two months of sales tax. At property tax, we're, we're almost at 98% already. Our year-to-date budget was, was $1,865,000, and we're at $2,731,000 year-to-date. On exhibit B, we have, um, our property tax collected, this includes the MNO and the INS portion of it, this is $3,844,061, and last year at this time, we're $3,842,272, so we're almost, uh, 1,800 above where we were last year at this time. Our sales tax is about 50% of our budget, we're $3,600,000, and year-to-date is, collected is $2,728,197. That's, uh, through March. On exhibit C, we have, uh, budget versus actual, this one does include April's also, um, but that's not recorded on the financials. Uh, April's collection was 510,711, so I'm thinking we still got some of the trickle from the stimulus on that one. But our budget was $3,150,000, and we collected, uh, $3,238,907, so we're almost 89,000 above where our budgeted amount. On exhibit D, we have actual 21 versus actual 20, and that one, we're about 70, a little over 74,000 above 21, I mean, 21 is above 2020, almost seven, a, a little over 74,000. Occupation on mixed beverage, we're about 45% year-to-date. Light franchise licenses and permits is a, a, a little, a little over 51%. Uh, intergovernmental is about 31%. Charges for services is about 153%. Um, fines and forfeitures were a little over 55%, and BT church, 97%. I'm sorry, the miscellaneous revenue is 97%, that's the BT church. And then our inter-fund transfers is right at the 66.67%. On exhibit D, we have our, I'm sorry, exhibit E, we have our general fund expenditures. Those are at 63.39%, so it's about three and a quarter percent less, which in this case is a good thing, our expenditures for, through May were $7,441,381. Some of your larger departments' general services at almost 56%, so that's under budget. Finance administration is, uh, a little over at 72%. Uh, fire department is right on budget at 66.62%. Police department is under budget at six, at 60%. Stream maintenance is about 62%. Uh, parks and playground is about 60%. On exhibit F, we have revenues versus expenditures for all major funds. Our general fund is at, uh, $247,191. Solid waste is, um, 40, almost 50,000 in, in the negative. Utility fund is 539,776 in the positive. Airport fund is at 2,155 in the positive, that's including the general fund transfers. Golf course is at 50,302. Hotel occupancy tax fund, 108,119 in the positive. And the multi-use complex is 66,849 in the negative with, including the transfers. On exhibit G, we have, um, revenues over expenditures, 2020 versus 2021. 2020 for general fund was 146,000, and 2021's 247,000 in the positive. Solid waste was almost 66,000 in the negative, and in 2021, it's about 50,000. Utility fund, about 674,000 in the positive, and this year is, uh, 540,000. Airport fund, 11,863 in the negative, and in 2021, it's, uh, 21, a little over 2,100 in the positive. Golf course fund, almost 2,200 in the negative, and this year, it's, uh, 50,302 in the positive. Hotel occupancy tax fund, 41,500 in the positive, and this year in 2021, it's, uh, a little over 108,000 in the positive. The multi-use complex, um, 65,588 in the negative, and in 2021, it's 66,849. That's including the transfers. That's it with the financials, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Yeah, I just wanted to, whoa, that got really loud. My voice carries. I just wanted to state that, you know, there was a concern last, uh, last meeting with the solid waste operations and the fact that it was a hundred and twenty-something thousand dollars in the negative. Um, we did have that one-time payment of 240, 250-ish, but this time around, it was only around 50,000 in the negative, so that's a continuously creeping down number that we've seen for some time now, right? We should be back to the zero, back to positive, right there on that budget, once we get to the end of the, end of the year, correct?
That's correct, yeah, cause you, you, we do have some big payments that come, the debt service payment was done, so as you add months, then you add revenues, and it, you're right, it starts showing the decrease.
I just know it was a concern when, when you see, you know, a utility fund like that, that's actually showing a huge negative number, because we are transferring out to aid our general fund, um, but that number is creeping back towards the zero as it should be when we have to make large payments like that. I just wanted to put that out there, because it was a point of address in the last, uh, in the last meeting, for citizens to realize that that is coming back to, uh, that zero number where it should be whenever they send it down.
On the solid waste?
On the solid waste fund, yes, cause that was, I think that was one of the, I think was one of the concerns that we had brought up, about the negative 130,000 dollars on that fund, but it is creeping back towards zero.
There were a couple of, a couple of funds. And I know we had, uh, where we weren't doing collections because of, uh, as far as the utility fund, and then now we're back to doing our collections and.
Right.
Disconnects and stuff.
Yes, we are, we started it.
Okay. Um, I know also, and, well, I'm sorry, let me.
No.
Any other questions, counsel? Mr. Molina?
No.
Mr. Burke?
No.
Mrs. Bowen?
I just have, have one on exhibit C, um, I didn't hear you correctly, did you say April was 500,000?
On exhibit C?
So, the.
510,711. Yeah, so it.
For April, right?
For April only, so it, it looks like, uh.
Yeah, could do.
Maybe some of the stimulus is still.
Yeah, it's a good number for us.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot higher than what we budgeted.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's, that's all I have.
And I know we had some, uh, vehicle repairs and maintenance also that caused some of that. To be over on our percentage.
Some of our equipment is, is kind of old, and, so we, we do have maintenance on, on some of, we, we tried repla, replacing some as much as we could, throughout the years we've been replacing as we can, but some of it is still, we, we still haven't put a big dent on the, on all of our equipment.
Okay. No other questions, counsel? Nope?
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number 17, here, a presentation from the Alice Fire Department, Fire Chief Patrick Thomas, regarding statistics for first quarter and yearly calls for service. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, sir.
Chief.
I'm Joe.
Thank you.
This is too many pictures.
I know.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel.
Good evening.
I have the first quarter, uh, fire department statistics and, uh, response, uh, numbers. And so, uh, I, I just provided you a, a list of all the different, or a couple of different reports, as I normally do, and I just wanna give some highlights, uh, over it, we did have a significant increase in, uh, calls in general, on, on almost every single, uh, type of call had an increase, some more than others, uh, but you'll see that, you'll also see an increase in the amount of mutual aid that was given, and you'll also see an increase in the amount of res, uh, and the response times as well. So, a couple of things that happened this last, that first quarter, uh, we had a ice storm that we had never seen before, uh, so there was a, a number of calls, rescue calls, uh, people, you know, sliding off the roads, going into, and hitting trees, things like that, uh, so that, that led to a, an increase in the calls. We also had a couple of, uh, of the spring storms that rolled through, uh, which power line calls, trees down, things like that, that, uh, came through, so a lot of that contributed to that increase, but it wasn't everything in general, when I broke it down and looked at all the different, uh, types of calls, it's just a general, uh, increase in call that, uh, I'm, I, I don't know for sure, but I'm thinking maybe the, uh, amount of people that have come out, uh, the end of the, of the light at the end of the tunnel with the pandemic, uh, people are out and about, there's, there's more people out in the streets, uh, and. Anytime, that, that's the, that's the, the, I guess, the, the, one of the reasons or a contributing factor is, when people are out and about, things are gonna happen, accidents are gonna happen, and that's when the fire department ends up having to get called out, uh, whether it be a fire, or vehicle accident, or, uh, medical call. So, the first report gives you, uh, this year's numbers, and then there's also last year's numbers as well, so you can, uh, have those as a comparison, as you can see how big the increase was, uh, but in general, it was a total of 149 more calls, uh, compared to this same time last year. Uh, the number of mutual aid calls, a lot of those were grass fires, a lot of them were in Brooks and Dubois counties, so our, if you look at our response times, it, that, there was also an increase in the response times, uh, those response times are all factored, it's an average of, of the response times to get to those calls, so, uh, when you're driving down to, uh, Southern Brooks, you know, that's a long, you know, 20, 30-minute response time, it's gonna, it's gonna increase the average, so that, that's, uh, the main factor in that. I did take a look in, in, and the, the reports are in here, you have the report for a city, you know, fires in the city, fires in county, uh, and when I say fires, I mean calls, just general calls for service. Uh, I took a look, I broke it down a little bit further to see if there was, uh, an increase inside the city versus inside the county, and, uh, there was more of an increase inside the city, but, uh, the counties were, were increased as well, just not as significant as the city's, uh, uh, increases. False alarms were another huge one, uh, that increased significantly, I think we had like 28, 28 more calls than we normally do at the same time, um, those, uh, some of them, some of them were due to, so a lot of times when there's power outages, uh, and alarms come back on, we, not only do we fill it at the fire, fire department where their alarms will activate, but the police department gets it too, they'll get burglary alarms that'll go off when the power comes back on, so a lot of it was from that, there was multiple times where power was going out in different parts of the city, and so those alarms were coming. I took, I, I went ahead and printed all of the, uh, uh, actual fire calls, the narratives for each one, and I've been reading through them all, and a lot of them are situations like that, uh, so that, that, that's what that, uh, increase was about. Uh, February was the big one, uh, that, that's where the biggest increase was. Uh, on our fires, I broke down those as well, uh, February and March are, are the times that we had the most amount of fires, we had 20, 22 in February and 26 in March, uh, and that's just in general, county, city, city and county. And a lot of them were the grass fires and, and, uh, you'll remember, we were in a drought, we were in a, in a, uh, there were, there were bird bands that were put in place, but fires were still happening, and sometimes you, you, there was some days where there was three or four fires just in that one day, uh, the grass fires, uh, that were, you know, spreading all along the side of the highways. So, that, that's my report, um, you have, you have the, the information, if, as always, uh, this information's available, uh, to you guys, and if you have any specific questions that you wanna set up, you, set up a meeting with me to discuss, you're more than welcome to do so. you're more than welcome to do so.
Patrick, just to understand the report better, under rescue and emergency medical, what, could you define that for me?
So rescue and emergency medical is a general term. It doesn't necessarily mean that somebody was stuck, or, it, it could mean that, but it also could be a medical call where somebody was in like a respiratory distress or something like that, where we would go and assist that.
What I'm asking is, does this include the response calls of the ambulance company?
Partially.
Is that included in this number?
This is only the times that we respond to help them. They have their own.
Okay, they have their own. Okay, I want to make sure that their numbers stand alone.
Yes. Their, their numbers are a lot higher than that.
We choose to accompany them.
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel, any other questions? Mrs. Bowen?
No, thank you.
Mr. Whitney? Mr. Molina?
I'm sorry.
No, we're good, thank you.
Mr. Chris?
Not at this time, I'm thinking.
Okay.
I was just going to say, just earlier today, we did have to call 911 and get an ambulance out to my, my mother's house for my nephew, and the response time was like just amazing. And they were very professional, and they took care of business, and it was really good.
Glad to hear that.
Took my hat off to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Chief.
Then we'll go to agenda item number 18. Here, a presentation from the Alice Police Department, Chief Eden Garcia, regarding statistics for first quarter and yearly calls for service arrest and citation information within the city of Alice.
So before I go into my stats and everything else, I'd like to say, first of all, thank you to our city manager for helping me with that grant. I know it was the Wyatt Ranges Foundation, but his assistance went a long way, and he doesn't realize, by being, him being, being there and assisting me, it, it made a great impact to our community. So thank you for that. Our financial department, they put together the PowerPoint for us. So, and so thank you, and thank you for allowing Taylor to assist us. So it was a group effort, and, and every, anytime you have a group effort, it, you have a great chance for success. So I want to say thank you to them. Some of the things that we've been looking at here at the police department is ways to streamline our reports, and I'm going to give you some stats in just a second. But when I look at what we do as a police department, I realize that, you know, we're spending a lot of time writing reports and not enough time out in the streets. So I want to be able to look at how we write our reports. Why do we write reports about? Because that's, that's important. I don't want to, officers just sitting in the office writing reports on incidents that may not need a report. But I'll, I'll get into that here shortly, because there's something that I'm doing that I think is really going to be a great impact for us. And so not only am I looking at ways to redo our offense or report system, but also how we investigate. So I've, I did talk to our city manager about this, and I, so I went ahead and brought in a retired Texas Ranger who'll be assisting us, and he'll be with us for a while. So I've hired him.
At this point, I will make the order of agenda item, here presentation.
Yes.
From the House Police Department, Chief Eden Garcia, American Statistics, for first quarter, yearly calls, for service arrests, citation information, general dissertation as to what we're doing with the police department.
Thank you.
Okay. So, on my numbers, what we'll be doing is, so if we look at January through May, one of the things that we're looking at are arrests, citations, warnings, incidents, and offenses. And so for the last, since January, you're looking at arrests. We made 60 arrests. In citations, we had 89. And then in warnings, we had 72. And then you had an increase on incidents and offenses. So you had 529 offenses and, or incidents, and 585 offenses, right? So you had 525 incidents, 585 offenses. So you may take, these incidents may have two incidents or three incidents all in one. So that's why you're going to see that number. And, and in February, it holds true to about the same amount. In March, and I'll be able to give you these numbers. So in March, you're going to see it start to increase. So our citation, our arrests went from 60 in January now to 96. Citations went to 77. Warnings went to 170. And incidents, 629. And then offenses, 683. So then in April, you see it start to increase again. So as far as arrests go, we had 119. So in January, we had 60. Now, in, in, come April, we have 119. Citations, we had 139. Warnings, we had 408. And then you see on incidents and offenses, 591 for incidents and 681 for offenses. In May, you see another increase. So that increase, arrests, we went in April from 119. Now in May, we went to 181 arrests for that year. So remember, it's, in January, we went from 60. Now in May, we went to 181. Citations, we gave 130. Warnings, 221. And then incidents, 633. And then offenses, 726. So you saw an increase. So I want to, well, those are the numbers that we do have on that. And then on burglaries, so this was something that, that I, I look at carefully. Because in, in April, we went from, we had, on burglary habitation, we had nine, actually eight burglaries, even though we put nine, but we had eight. Burglary of vehicles, we had 15 for that month. And then in burglary of a building, we had one. So then in May, and if you notice the numbers in the arrests in May, from, from April to May, they went up. But you also saw my burglaries go down. So we went from eight in April, now in May, we went to three. So you're going to see a decline. And I want to attribute that to the strong enforcement that we're now providing in our streets, being more citations, being more active, being proactive, instead of always being reactive. So that's why you're going to see those numbers, and I want to attribute. But I won't be able to get a true me, a true numbers probably till five, six months down the road, because naturally, we're just starting and been here for the last two months. So you've seen a great increase in citations and arrests. And now you see a decline in burglaries. As home burglaries, that's what I'm looking at. As far as narcotics goes, on, in cocaine alone, we seized over 4.2 ounces of cocaine. Well, that's with a street value of 10,500. Meth, we had 8.7 ounces. That's a street value of $22,000. Marijuana, we had 26.0 ounces, estimated street value of 14,168. Then you have some synthetic narcotics at 25.3 grams, estimated street value at $300. Heroin, .9 grams at $100. And then THC wax, 13.4 grams, and that was in it, at 402, for combined total of 47,470. Looking at the, the felony fugitive arrests and misdemeanor arrests, felony fugitive arrests by our, our criminal investigation division was 33, and misdemeanor was 31. So, and then we also had five cases in the last two months that now we're working with DA. So they've come in, and as far as our stats go, we have turned those cases over to the federal government, so they will be prosecuting those cases for us. U.S. currency seized, just here locally, in the last two, actually, in March, we, in May, 23,648.86. We've seized five motor vehicles, and we've recovered five stolen firearms in those vehicles. So that is, those are our numbers so far. And I will get you the totals and, and all the burglaries and everything else, and that way I can hand them to you. But those are the numbers currently right now for the Alice Police Department. If there's any questions or anything, please. Please.
The felony and fugitive arrest and misdemeanor arrests, was that any arrest with assistance from the county?
Yes, some of them were, actually. So we're working handi-, I didn't know if I could, I just wanted to give numbers.
You can answer, you can.
Okay.
Questions, clarification, questions, if that's your answer.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just don't know the process.
I know. I'm afraid to ask questions too around here.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. So, yes, we did. We did. We worked hand in hand, and we've worked very well with county. A lot of the cases that we're working, we're working hand in hand.
Yeah.
And then a lot of them were self-initiated by our department.
Yeah.
But yes, yes, ma'am, to answer questions.
Good. I want the citizens to know that, that you are working with our county, and we're doing a great job together.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Burke?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Very interesting. Okay, so we move on to agenda item number 19, delivery of updated grant report is. Okay, so who's?
No, we just, we.
You just want it, just to look. Are there any questions about the report, grant report, counsel? Mr. Chris? Mr. Burke? Mrs. Bowen? On some of these that say approved, they're, they've been approved by counsel or, and they've been applied for, that's all we're just waiting for.
Yeah, they're just lists of all the grants we're working on.
That we're working on. Okay. All right, then. So if no other questions or anything, move on to agenda item number 20, adjourn and/or consider and act upon adjournment.
Second, whichever one you pick.
Thank you. Here we have first and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay, needing adjourned. It is 8:13 PM. Thank. Thank you.